The time being 7:00 PM. Quorum of the planning board being present. Call this meeting to order. I'll just let everyone know, obviously, we have a truncated board this evening. A couple of medical things, so there are some things that we were going to have on the agenda tonight that are going to get pushed along with the ones that already have requested. So if anyone is here for agenda items C, D, E, F, G, H, or K, those will not be heard tonight. Those will all be continued because, one, either they've requested it, or, two, the matter doesn't allow us to vote because we don't have enough members present this evening to vote on those matters. So they're all going to get pushed. So we will try to plow through what we do have and, you know, get ourselves ready for a longer night in July. So we'll start with agenda item A, which is approval of minutes. We don't have any. Moving on to agenda item B, committee reports, administrative actions. There are no committee reports because the other two members who are on committees are not here, and I don't have one. So moving on to agenda item B2, town planners' report, housing production plan acceptance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick notes before we move on to the housing production plan acceptance. Number one, on the horizon for next meeting, you don't have any brand-new applications for July 17th. We just have the addition of the special permit filing for 1879 Main Street. As mentioned at the previous meeting, there was a bit of a technicality. We want to make sure we're cleaning up to make sure that the filing for 1879 Main Street was complete. So that's on the agenda officially. Notices were sent out, so we're all set there. Number two, just wanted to note that the Select Board held their initial public hearings for retail marijuana licenses on June 12th, 13th, and 20th. All of the hearings were continued to the Select Board's July 18th meeting where further deliberation and public comment will be heard. Any residents wishing to submit comments should either attend the July 18th Select Board meeting at 7:00 PM or else submit written comments to the Select Board office via email or snail mail. Next item, just to note that 1880 Main Street Treehouse Brewing, their taproom is open for business. Some folks have probably already noticed additional activity there, and the golf is forthcoming. Next item, the Town Hall Annex and Senior Center all have new operating hours. So effective today, June 26th, the Town Hall Annex and Senior Center are open for the following hours. Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday are all 7:30 to 4:30, which is what we have currently. Tuesday will now be open 7:30 AM to 6:00 PM to allow for residents and business owners to reach the Town Hall and Annex for business matters later than normal. And Friday, because of the late opening for Tuesday, the new hours for Fridays will be 7:30 to 12:30. If you have any questions about how that affects anything that you may be working with, feel free to contact the individual departments. I'm also happy to answer questions. And last but not least, moving on to the housing production plan. This is the Housing Production Plan 2023-2027, which you received a full draft of at the June 12th meeting. It's 155 pages. Wanted to give you a little time for some light reading. And following the presentation, I do ask for your endorsement of the plan, and I'm going to continue on to the Select Board tomorrow evening and then eventually submit to the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, which is now known as the Executive Office of Livable Communities, Housing and Livable Communities, I think. Anyway, you folks have copies of the slides in front of you, and I'm also going to put them up on the screen behind you for the folks in the audience's benefit. So again, this is for the Tewksbury Housing Production Plan 2023-2027, and this is an update to our now expired plan, which served 2016 to 2021. And this plan does allow for some safe harbor measures, and it demonstrates to the state that the town does have a plan for housing production. So just to start off, just looking at how the community was involved in this plan's creation, the initial planning process did start last year around this time, in fact, with a literature review of other plans such as the Tewksbury Master Plan and the previous housing production plan. And then initial findings were reviewed at the Select Board meeting on August 4th, which is also the meeting that they announced that, or they named their goals for the upcoming year, housing production being one of them. And the same findings were presented to this board on August 22nd of the same month. And following those initial findings, NIMCOG and Tewksbury staff organized an affordable housing workshop on November 9th, and that was held in person at the Tewksbury Public Library, where we heard some initial feedback about what people thought should be in the housing production plan and what they thought may be improved upon from the last one. Following that, we issued a housing survey, December 1st through January 9th of '23, and to continue that public outreach and getting some findings. And then we held another affordable housing workshop on March 16th. That was held virtually via Microsoft Teams and actually had increased participation through that method, which was great. And we discussed the findings of that housing survey and the advent of some of the goals and action items for the, for the plan. Now here, just why are we planning for housing? And the bottom line is that Tewksbury has an affordability crisis. And just looking at these, these graphics here that are sourced from data from the U.S. Census Bureau 2016/2020 American Community Survey, over 30% of Tewksbury households are housing cost burdened, which means that they're paying more than 30% of their income on housing. And that's a huge problem. And we're unfortunately, we're, we're pretty much on par with the rest of the greater Lowell area, in fact, being slightly less burdened than the region at large, but still 30% of folks spending more than a third of their income is not great. And when we say affordable, what does affordable mean in Tewksbury? So the area median income in Tewksbury is 126,500. So that means folks who are looking for those housing options at the 80% area median income would be maxing out at $80,000 per year, $80,500, excuse me. And just to give that a little bit of context, NIMCOG was kind enough to provide these kind of calculations to really drive it home, that two family members making $20 an hour make about $80,000. So we're talking people who are just making a little bit more than the minimum wage, which you would think if somebody's making about $5 more than the minimum wage, they should be able to afford housing. So right now, we're looking, this is just a summary of the subsidized housing inventory, the SHI, which is often a buzzword when we're talking about 40Bs or other affordable developments. The 2010 SHI goal was 1,080 units, 10% of the 10,803 year-round units. The current number we have is 1,087, which is just a hair over that minimum. And now that the census numbers have been solidified, we're still waiting for DHCD to update the subsidized housing inventory to find out what that final calculation is, what our 10%, our new 10% is actually going to be. And just based on being a little more conservative, if the year, if the total housing units is 12,139, which it is, that was confirmed in the 2020 census data, then based on that need, Tewksbury needs 1,214 to be 10%, which puts us at about a 127 unit deficit from what we already had on the books from 2010. Now, we do need that final number from DHCD confirmed because that's based on how many year-round units versus seasonal units, and they're the ones who know what those look like. So we're going to be waiting, but if we were being really conservative, then we definitely need at least 127 units. And just kind of a snapshot here of the median home sales price, so a little couple of facts on the right there. You can see since 2012, the median detached home in price in Tewksbury rose faster than the Massachusetts median. Housing sales numbers have been more or less steady since 2016, even through the pandemic, but that means that we're kind of staying steady at demand and, and supply. And according to the permit data, the average construction value in 2021 was $329,049, which is nearly $100,000 more than 2020. Now, a lot of that can be down to supply chain shortages, labor shortages, and just the overall lead time that folks were experiencing when constructing. And just the premium that, you know, that corresponds to not being able to build nearly as much for as much money as you used to. And the typical Tewksbury homes sold in 2021 would not be affordable to at least 70% of Tewksbury households. Now, when we were talking about a third of Tewksbury being cost burdened, that may be a lot of folks who don't, haven't owned their homes for decades or maybe don't have it as high of a mortgage. So anybody going into the housing market now is, has a, having a really rough time. Anecdotally, and then the numbers reflect the same. And correspondingly, Tewksbury has an undersupply of rental units. Tewksbury is more than 80% owner occupied, so we have a lot of single-family homes, a lot of condo ownership. And this results in Tewksbury having the second highest median rent in the area, and I can actually pull additional data there. According to the U.S. Census Bureau's American Community Survey from 2017 to 2021, Tewksbury is only second to Westford, and it's only by $4 for how high our rent is. The aggregate gross median rent for Tewksbury is $2,130 a month, which is super fun for all of us.
Say that again, just that number again?
Oh, $2,130 a month.
And that's $4 lower than Westford?
Cheaper than Westford, who's 2,134. And when we're talking about folks who are cost burdened by housing, who carries that burden? And disproportionately, it is small, non-elder families, and then also non-family households, so where one of the folks is at least 62 years or older. So that can be one or two, you know, folks over 62 living together, or it can be other small non-families. Now, these are two quotes that I pulled out from the survey that was conducted between December and January of this year, and it really demonstrates the desperate need that we have in town for affordable housing. And I'll just, for the benefit of folks who may be visually impaired, quote, "I would love to see my children, who grew up in here in Tewksbury, be able to afford to live in the town they grew up in." One moved to London during New Hampshire, and the other rents in Tewksbury but struggles to pay, excuse me, struggles to buy groceries and pay bills. And another person said, quote, "Affordable housing that is actually affordable, a single woman with children and only income is one job at minimum wage, cannot afford affordable housing." And the waitlist for housing assistance can be up to 10 years. And we saw that demonstrated in the numbers that I presented just a few slides ago, where two people making above minimum wage can't afford affordable housing, which creates another issue where if people make slightly too much to afford the 80% AMI housing, but they can't afford market housing either, then they're really in a tough place. I will not read all of these off. I'm happy to go through these with anybody who wants to, but these are the goals to create more affordable housing that we came up with, town staff and NIMCOG, as a result of the affordable housing workshops and the survey. And just a couple of notes that I would like to pull out. Creating more diverse types and sizes of ownership units, including types such as smaller, single-family, detached, duplexes, townhouses at affordable prices that can serve as, quote, "starter homes." Let's see, a couple, these were some of my favorites here. Infrastructure, increase infrastructure capacity in areas targeted for development or redevelopment. And another that's really important is goal number three, monitor existing income restricted units and maintain these units as affordable. Now, if folks have paid attention to some Select Board agendas, you'll know that there have been some requests in the last month or so to have affordable housing trust fund money allocated to projects to maintain the affordability of units that were deemed affordable 20, 30 years ago in older developments, excuse me, where keeping them affordable in perpetuity wasn't really in our vernacular yet, but that's something that we do now, and it's something that these developments, when they're calculating their affordable units, they have to keep in mind for the life of the, of the building. And looking at some of the implementation strategies that will go towards these 15 goals. So as I just mentioned, maintaining the SHI by continuing to monitor expiring units and pursuing the right of first refusal opportunities. Now, the thing with the SHI is we are adding units, but we also don't want those units to come off because that just puts us, you know, back in a hole, and that's not helpful either. Working with smaller groups, Tewksbury Home Build and Habitat for Humanity, to create affordable homes on smaller lots. We saw that with homes on South Street. Strengthening the Family Suite Bylaw to, through as-of-right accessory dwelling units. There are some communities around us that are already working on that. Lowell is one of them, I believe they were bringing a zoning ordinance to make them more inclusive just in the last couple of months. Researching and identifying areas in residential districts with smaller lots than zoning districts allow, and evaluating the feasibility of reducing the minimum lot size in those areas. Now, you know, folks who live in town are highly aware that there are pockets in neighborhoods in Tewksbury that are a half acre, quarter acre, even less in certain areas. And we do have some lots in those neighborhoods that are vacant, that right now they would have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they would have to prove that they predated zoning, but practically speaking, all the lots around them are the same size. So it's really not a hardship, but really, they just didn't build in time before the zoning changed. So exploring those kinds of options. Evaluating allowing two-family dwellings in the R40 district and opportunities for adaptive reuse to residential. So what we're actually going to see at the ZBA this Thursday is 1775 Andover Street, the residents in hotel applying for a comprehensive permit 40B to make an adaptive reuse out of the long-stay hotel into apartment units. And then finally, incorporating community engagement into discussions about and for decision-making on affordable housing. So just making sure that these conversations aren't the end, that we're not going to stop now that the housing production plan is done. And I encourage folks who are interested in the topic to visit the Community Developments page on the town website. There's a lot of information there, or to reach out to me or any other staff member. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Go in reverse. Set this aside.
Yeah, obviously, it seems like, you know, a noble initiative to a real problem that we have here in town. And one thing you had mentioned there, you mentioned that some of the older units have affordable units kind of rolling off. So is that 127 that we are short, is that a fixed number, or is that something that we expect older ones to roll off and need to catch up on?
So 127, so let me just back up. So the subsidized housing inventory requires that we have 10% of our available year-round units. So the 127 is probably the highest it's going to have to be, and that would be that the, if seasonal units come off, then it could be less. That 10% number could be based on a lower number than the 12,139. That is the maximum that it's going to be. So the 127 is probably the highest that it's going to be, but we're still not going to know until the SHI is formally updated. And we were told it was going to be shortly thereafter the 2020 census is updated, but that was on May 23rd, so still waiting.
Noting of course, it's 2023.
That too.
I think that's it for me. Couple of things, and I guess I'll work from the bottom of the slides and work back because I only have a few questions. The, the zoning part, would that be something we would look at solely for the purpose of creating more affordable housing? Or would we open it up because it's consistent with the neighborhood, if they're building similar houses? And by nature, they should be affordable because it'll be smaller on smaller lots?
Right, so it can kind of...
Just curious how, how hands-on we're going to get with controlling the development on those types of lots?
Right, so not only do we have an affordable housing crisis, but we just, we have a market-rate housing crisis. And, you know, supply and demand, if we are creating more market-rate units and houses, then that'll also drive costs down. So I think the intention really is to produce both, but it doesn't mean that we don't include some sort of incentive if they're going to be affordable. But I think the intention is for the zoning to apply to the district as a whole, and again, perhaps we can explore doing some incentives for affordable units specifically.
And let's hear, I had a question about... Oh, develop ladders to homeownership in Tewksbury for both residents and those who wish to settle in Tewksbury. Are there some ideas that have been kind of put forth on that, or is that just a concept right now?
So I do not believe that we have any super hard specific action items related to that goal right now, but that was something more that NIMCOG had suggested we put into the housing production plan as a general concept and guidance. So, you know, just making sure that we're always open for opportunities, like if we learn about first-time home buyer programs, making sure that we're connecting folks with that. And generally speaking, creating ladders to homeownership does involve creating more market and affordable units. So just really making housing more affordable in general.
So I guess we need to, I guess, look at the, what people are paying for affordable-rate housing, and then what would be the next step? Full market-rate housing is obviously far too big a leap.
Right.
So we need to figure out and maybe work with them and find out what would be a reasonable step up. And obviously, it's very tough to move up right now because inflation is just draining everybody's income and whatnot, but I would hope within the next five years, there will be a good opportunity to try to elevate these families and other people that are looking to climb that ladder.
Right.
And if you had one last question, which was, so the Tewksbury median home sales price, one of the...
Go ahead.
One of the things that always kind of bothers me is when you say, like, not you, but anything like this, when it says medium home price for Massachusetts. Well, you're the city of Boston, where you can't rent a broom closet for less than three grand a month, or buy, you know, a condo overlooking a junkyard for half a million. But then you can go out west, past Springfield, and you could buy, you know, basically a giant house that's maybe a million-dollar home in Tewksbury for $300,000 on 10 acres. So medium home price, I mean, our prices are high just because we're in a good location in terms of people want to stay in Massachusetts, not go to New Hampshire, so we're close enough to the city for people that work there, great access to 495-128. Tewksbury is a more desirable place. So it's not like we're more expensive, we're priced for what the community offers. And if I recall correctly, we were voted like the best community in the country when it came to work from home and remote access and all of that. So the fact that we're 10% higher than the median, when you consider what's lacking in probably 100 or so of the 351 mass communities, and how much more affordable we are than so many other communities like Cambridge, Somerville, Charleston, and so forth, you know, that number is, it probably is coming off as a negative, but I feel that that's probably very reasonable, and that Tewksbury is offering a really great value for what you're getting. And that, so that's just a comment more so than a question. But I definitely agree with a lot of the, what we're trying to accomplish here. Interested to see what some of the next steps are and what kind of community involvement we can get to build those ladders and maybe bring in some people from the local banks and try to get them networked so that all the people that would be involved in this process are all working on it together.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I've spent the interim, the other two board members were speaking, doing my count to 10 in my head, in the hopes that I can calm myself before I talk, because the biggest problem with all of this seems to be, I want to be careful how I say all of this, but I'm not even sure if education's the right way to say it, but every time something comes up that would possibly try to address any of what's just been discussed, a fit is pitched about whatever that project is. And, you know, the only goal anyone seems even remotely interested in is getting to the 10% as a bare minimum, just to stop 40B projects, and for no other reason. So I think you see the quotes that you have, but I question whether or not that's really the feeling of the town, because I'm not sure exactly what the town wants to be. When someone throws a fit about any of these projects, you hear things like, well, I want Tewksbury to be like Tewksbury used to be. Setting aside the fact that that train has long since left the station, and this is not like a farming community from the early 1900s, but the fact that matters, when you say things like, I want my children to be able to live here, well, the thing is, to your comment, which is, like, I started off in Malden. Everything got expensive in that area, so everybody I knew moved here. Everybody who's here is now being pushed into New Hampshire. So it's sort of this ring of things that keep happening. Now, one of the differences with some of the communities you mentioned is, we actually have space. There are, there are places where we could build things, already that have happened in, you know, recent time, but still even going forward. Many of those places are simply locked out of any more space. They'd have to knock down an old mall to build anything, or that kind of thing. They just don't have the space to do what we could otherwise do. But every time something like that, I've hopped on this for I don't know how long, the fact that we require an acre of land to build a single-family home without some, something else allowing it, that's a football field. You have to have a football field to build a home without the end zones. I don't want to overstate it. The playing field portion, you have to have that in order to build a home, which means you build a home that can only then, after a builder builds it, be sold for an expensive amount of money. That's not a starter home. Yet your second or third home, maybe, and now you're coming to Tewksbury after you've done something else, maybe. So who is it we're trying to attract? Some of those projects we have approved that people have thrown a fit about are one, two-bedroom homes. Even while doing them, we had people throwing things like, oh, it's going to overrun the schools. I presume people may have just seen the story where they just said they let teachers go because there aren't enough students to retain the teachers in our schools. That was never going to happen. That was just something people would say as another reason to try and say, don't do these. It didn't make any sense. It was never, whenever we asked the school, it was never backed up. It was just another one of those things of NIMBY, not my backyard, we don't want it. Well, now you have this huge discrepancy that you're pointing out. I mean, if we want to be Westford, fine, okay. If that's what your aim is, then fine, but accept that, though, because that's what you're doing. When you make it so you can't build anything, you, actually, I guess it's bold of you. The example I use when I talk about it more often than less, what I refer to as Supercell Tewksbury. If you know what Supercell Tewksbury is, because I've been reprimanded as not a lifelong resident of Tewksbury, that when I said "South Tewksbury," it meant more than what I meant. So Supercell Tewksbury is moving towards the lake in Wilmington, where you can literally reach out your window, borrow a cup of sugar from your neighbor. That's how close together the homes are down there. When I bring up things like smaller lot zoning, I get shouted down constantly. I use that as an example. That exists. It's already like that down there. Yet another fit was pitched when some property down there opened up, and the thought that anyone was going to build anything that might look like the things that are already down there was just a non-starter. So your choice then is to build what amount to, again, sort of the manor home amongst the fiefdom of homes in that area, because you have to take that land and build acre-size properties that do not fit in any way in that neighborhood. They don't look like anything else that exists down there. But when it gets brought up, I try to bring it up for the new zoning. The fear was literally that it might not pass, the zoning might not pass if that was included. Why? It makes no sense. It argues completely against what this is saying we need and that we'd like to aim for, but the appetite just doesn't seem to exist to actually do it, with the reaction you get every time something like it comes up. The MBTA requirement for being an MBTA community, again, fits, being pitched, because you might have to comply with those rules. And the thought is, well, let's find a way to comply with the rules, but bury it so it can never actually be of any use, and not actually put it anywhere near the MBTA stations, where you could actually get to the MBTA stations to use it, just to comply with the rule so you can not get yelled at by the state, but not because you really want to do what you're being asked to do, and the whole point of the MBTA community's rules. That is counterproductive to what we're talking about here. It's counterproductive to what you hear some people say they wish Tewksbury would be, or make it possible for people to stay or live. I mean, if you are, if you're an older family and you have a big house, we don't really have that downsizing option for you because we're being prevented from allowing anyone to build that kind of thing in town. So it's, it's a, it's sort of a self-fulfilling prophecy that we have this, and we can't do anything about it, because any effort to do anything about it just raises, you know, a horror show of reaction to it, because, one, I think people misunderstand, again, the difference between low-income housing and 40B, like 40B housing, which is affordable housing. Look at what affordable actually means in terms of dollars a month, what you'd have to make to have an affordable home in Tewksbury. And I think you might realize that's not what you're thinking it is, because, but I don't have the number off the top of my head, but the full one, if you're doing a full family, what is it, like four?
A single family, oh, so we have a three-person family, $80,500 is what you need.
Okay, so...
Well, excuse me, that, that's... Well, excuse me, that, that's the threshold where you stop qualifying for, you make 80,501, and you're suddenly not qualified for 80% housing.
So, that, you know, you're talking about an $80,000, just for a family of three, to be qual, to, to skip, to slip into qualifying. I don't think that's what people realize when they hear affordable versus low income. Everybody's, not everybody, too many, put those two things together and think they're the same thing. Section 8 is not the same as 40B affordable housing, they're not the same thing. But the reaction, more often than not, is that, is that you feel like, "Oh, no, we don't want low-income housing." Okay, but what, what do you really mean? Because I don't think what you're saying is what you really mean, at least I hope not. Affordable, that's different than low-income, Section 8 housing, setting aside whether you should be against that or not, I'm just saying. Understanding the difference between the two, you know, affordable and Western, or whatever, you know, no one in here is going to think that that's an affordable number, because you're going off the median income. So, affordable and Western isn't affordable to almost anyone. So, if they bother to build any there, affordable isn't really, you know, what anyone's going to be thinking of. So, that's what I see as the biggest problem with this, is we put these together, they sound good, they mean well, but I think they're fighting a, you know, against the tide in, in a real way, because there doesn't feel like any kind of support to do that kind of thing. It's fear of trying to do that thing that seems to actually affect more people. The project that just died up at Ames Pond, well, if your biggest goal is to be over the forty, uh, the 10%, and never really have to worry about that, that project alone would have put us so far ahead of that number that you would have been good for a long time, and you wouldn't have to worry about it. But it would have added affordable housing in sizes that people could, you know, rent, it would have been rental, it wouldn't have been sales. So, we're devoid of rentals, and, you know, the rentals are going to include, you know, you might be able to rent a house or something in town, but there aren't enough rentals. But when a project like that comes up, if it's a rental, people don't want it, they don't, they want to get behind it, even if it makes sense, if it causes other positives in terms of whether it's the 40B thresholds, that we can at least have more control, whatever, but that's, that's what you're fighting against with this, because everything in here sounds good, and everything in here makes sense, and it all seems to be working towards a goal you would think we should be working towards. Again, unless it's our intention to become one of those Western-type towns, where, you know, at, at some point you get to the point where you say, "I don't care if we don't have 10%." You know what I mean, it doesn't matter to us, no one's coming here, that's just how you do it, you know, and that's, I don't think that's what people want, at least that's what they said, but then the actions when things come up don't seem to match the quotes. But, you know, I mean, unless, unless people can really figure out a way to embrace some of these things, to make some of the changes, to make things a little bit, something in the middle, there really doesn't exist a lot of the middle in Tewksbury. We don't have the middle options. You have big houses, and then you might have some of the other, you know, but you're losing any ability to try and create that middle with the rules we have in place, and anything that gets around those rules, you know, some kind of subdivision, something like we used to have when we do, you know, whether it was, you know, putting in a, you know, a retail portion that gave you the, but nobody liked that. So, it's, it's really difficult, I think, to, to try and address this without more in, in terms of outreach and working to actually explain other benefits to the town from these things beyond what I think, you know, people think. I, I, I don't know, because I just think we won't get anywhere with this, because that, that just isn't the, the reaction we seem to have when things come forward.
Sure. And not to belabor the point, and before I ask for, um, your endorsement to continue on to the Select Board, I will say that a big challenge for reaching even a fraction of these goals is to have folks reconcile and reckon with what they think Tewksbury should look like versus what it can be. And it's my intention to work with this board and other boards to continue to work towards zoning changes that make sense, just like the recodification we did, hopefully not as labor-intensive as that, uh, public outreach process was, but because that was such a big document. And we're going to see it this summer with the MBTA community's zoning that we're going to have to implement next year, whether folks realize it or want it or not. My intention is to make sure that we are doing several touchpoints with the community and with the boards throughout the process, and hopefully we get to some successful, successful zoning articles at town meeting.
Anything else?
I just want to say, you did bring up one point of, of irony, which is, when you think of South, South, Supersouth Tewksbury, well, you have this one contingent of, well, we want Tewksbury to be the way it was built up before, but when you go into a neighborhood like that, and you say, "Well, we want to do more like this," and like, "No, no, no." So, it's like, on the one hand, they want to extend what Tewksbury started out as, but then, when you say, "Okay, well, let's just do more of this in this area, because it's consistent with the neighborhood," and then they push back again. Uh, the other thing I want to say is, and I don't know if this is getting too far ahead, but, uh, but you had a really good point, people just simply don't understand the difference. Honestly, I, I, I get the feeling that a lot of people are just somewhat insulated, because we are pretty far away from Boston, and when we think of affordable or Section 8 or low-income, we automatically assume it's a single mother, the father's not in the picture, trying to raise kids, and she's working one or two jobs, and maybe it'd be great to just show that, you know, a, a three-person family making under 80,000, that could just be two teachers and a child, you know, two teachers making 38,000 apiece, and, you know...
That's actually what we based the number on, too, was two teachers' salaries in Tewksbury.
So, I think what we really need to do, whether it's anonymous or not, but we kind of need to let people in Tewksbury know that, you know, these aren't outsiders coming here with their problems and their baggage, these are just your neighbors growing up around you that just need a little bit of a help, helping hand to, to get started. Um, you know, they shouldn't have, I mean, you know, I don't see how two teachers could possibly afford a home and raise a child with these housing numbers. So, why are we chasing our teachers out of town, or any of our other civil servants, or anyone else that maybe is just starting out somewhere? So, you know, I think what we need to do is just identify within the town that these are people that you see every day, you know, they, you, they might be stocking your shelves at Market Basket, they might be, um, you know, serving you at Treehouse Brewery, or any of these other great businesses that we have in town, and all they want to do is they like the town, they work in the town, they'd like to also be able to live in the town.
And a lot of them are already here.
So, I think that's what we need to do, is maybe pull the curtain back on all of this misconception about who these families and who these individuals are that are looking to, um, put down roots in Tewksbury and live here, and let them know that, um, and, and maybe get a group of them to work with a group of developers and a group of financial institutions and some, and, you know, people from the town boards, and, you know, just work together. So, you know, we're all working together, and we know who we are, and it's not a bunch of people over here trying to do something for a bunch of people that really don't know who they are, or what they look like, or what they need, um, and, you know, but we'll, we'll try to do this, because we've got to get to that 10% number. Like, let's, like, like you said, Mr. Chairman, let's get past the whole 10% thing, let's figure out who our community is and what they need, so that we can build up our community at all levels.
Thank you.
All right, so, Ms. Lauda needs a, a motion to, is it?
Endorse.
Endorse, I'm sorry, to endorse the, um, housing plan, so do I have a motion to endorse?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous, thank you, Ms. Lauda.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, uh, did anybody come in, I don't know if anybody came in, but just, just to reiterate from before, several of our hearings that were originally scheduled have been, um, postponed for the next meeting because of the, uh, the short board this evening, so if you are here for Agenda Item C, D, E, F, G, H, and K, uh, those are going to be heard at our next meeting in July, so if you're here for those, you can leave, because nothing will be done on those, you will not miss anything, all right? Oh, I'm sorry, so those are, I'll read them real, which one?
Yeah, 600 Shawshin.
July 17th.
July 17th, yep, mhm.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I didn't do it before, but I'll just do the addresses real quick. 170 French Street, 1699 Shawshin, uh...
1430.
1438 Main Street, 1879 Main Street, 1600 Shawshin Street, 1600 Shawshin, it's two hearings, because they're just separate, and 1695 Shawshin Street, those are the ones that are being continued, all right?
The 17th you said?
Correct. No problem. Moving on to Agenda Item B3, which is 1167, 1177, 1187 Main Street, for an approval not required plan.
Good evening, uh, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants. Um, I'll just kind of walk you through, uh, this plan kind of quickly here, so, uh, this is the, the property that's owned by the McClellan Oil Company and their family, um, so it's three lots altogether, 1167, 1177, 1187. In total, it's three acres, uh, the first is a half an acre, two half-acre lots, and one 2.1 acre lot, give or take, which is the larger, um, McClellan Oil, uh, Commercial Site. Um, on site, you can see we've got wetlands, 25-foot, 50-foot, floodplain, we have some resource area considerations. Um, what we're proposing to do tonight is to take three lots and make two lots. Um, so we would have, uh, Lot 4, which would be a 1.1 acre lot with 122 feet of frontage, and I can't see, but I believe that's the McClellan Oil Site. And then the Lot, uh, Lot 5, uh, would be a two-acre lot with 336 feet of frontage. Um, there is an existing home that has some significance to the family and, and potentially some architectural, uh, significance, and that's the lot that is located, uh, that's the house that's located in the middle lot. Um, the idea at this point is to just relocate that house onto the McClellan Oil Lot, uh, to be used as office space, um, and then raise the two remaining buildings that are, that are, um, that are there. Um, I'll just have you note that we did go to the Board of Appeals, uh, to discuss the, uh, consideration of an expansion of a, of a pre-existing non-conforming use, and that was approved about two or three weeks ago. So, all we're in front of you here tonight is the ability to modify, uh, three lots into two, and they all comply with the underlying zoning. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Starting this at this, Tim?
No questions on my end, seems pretty cut and dry.
Right, so was I.
Um, that, uh, the building and chair relocating, the wood frame dwelling, is that, is that represented where it's going?
Yeah, more or less.
Top left, or is it the shaded one over there?
Yeah, it's the, the top left, uh, further up, uh, and it's a, yes, right there, it's a dash, it's only a portion of that building, I guess there was an, uh, an addition at some point, um, that they're not going to bring over, but, yep.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out which one it was, because I couldn't line the up.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, uh, no further questions from you.
All right, the chair has no questions either, we're all set, so do we have a motion to endorse the A and R? So moved. Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous, all set, thank you. I got the, uh, Myler up here, right?
Yes, yep.
All right, so that brings us to Agenda Item C, which is 177 French Street, applicant request to continue to our 7/17 meeting, which we have penciled in for 7:00 PM, so can I have a motion to continue that to 7:00 PM on the 17th?
So moved.
All right, motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Moving to Agenda Item D, 1699 Shawshin Street, we have that penciled in for...
That's a withdrawal without prejudice.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, so, do we have a motion to accept the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice?
So moved.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. That moves us to Agenda Item E, which is 1438 Main Street, uh, that one, 7:00 PM as well, so we have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Motion made, second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, brings us to 1879 Main Street, also to the 17th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, motion seconded.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That moves us to Agenda Item G, 1600 Shawshin Street, uh, we have that in for 7:05 on the 17th, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, brings us to Agenda Item G, which is 1600 Shawsh, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, the second out of 1600 Shawshin Street, uh, we have that for 7:10, have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item I, 890 East Street, uh, the site plan review continuing from our 6/12 meeting. What's that?
Something to talk about.
Okay, thank you.
What's your selection, if you can give me names for the record?
Yep, uh, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
Patrick Nichols, uh, for Bella Luna.
Kirsten Braun, Chapel Engineering Associates.
All right, floor is yours.
Great, um, you can, if I just set the table here?
Yep, I just wanted to talk about the revisions.
Yeah, so, um, I'll just kind of give you a brief walkthrough of the revisions that were made to address your comments, Alex's comments, and DPW's comments. For the most part, it was, uh, uh, housekeeping items. Um, uh, there was a typo on the plan, uh, an enclosed dumpster pad, uh, we were asked to put detailed, the detailed calculated parking calculations on the plan, that's provided on the, uh, on the sheet that you have there in front of you, snow storage, trees and shrubs, um, uh, bike rack, we provided the bike rack that was, that was requested. Um, the one, the one adjustment to the plan that I just do want to call your attention to is if, if, Alex, you went kind of on the plans to the, to the left there, up at the top where we have the, uh, loading area, um, we, this is an addition, so we had a bit of a discussion about the loading area, there's actually one on the left-hand side beyond the enclosed parking area, um, uh, the, the other entrance off of Lumber Lane further up, if you come down, yeah, uh, see, it says no parking right there, next, uh, next to the bottom text that says remove or replace existing bit burn, um, I could take the most. Oh, okay, sorry, I wish I had a point, but there is an existing loading area that we, that we considered, but that was relatively far from the use, so we took a look at some of the options that we have here, and we decided to go, uh, there's an existing door between Lumber Lane in the building on that side, so we're proposing a 14-foot wide, yep, 14-foot wide loading area that'll also provide access to a dumpster pad. So, that's the one modification to the plan of note. Um, we, we've, uh, doing our best to provide the, uh, shrubs and trees to try to provide some sort of natural screening, and there was also some discussion on whether or not that would be considered prohibited under Section 6.1.11(c), which limits, um, uh, paved area to, within 20 feet of the, uh, of the, of the sideline there. Um, we're about 11 and a half feet, give or take, but we are 20 feet from, from Lumber Lane's, um, edge of pavement, um, so we did want to call that out to your attention, but we felt like this is the best spot for the specific use that we're proposing here tonight. Um, that kind of summarizes the site issues. Um, you might recall at the last meeting, we, there was some discussion about an awaiting traffic study, that study has been done. Kirsten Braun is here tonight from Chapel Engineering, and she can walk you through her findings.
Um, thanks for having us tonight. Uh, we did perform a full traffic impact and access study for this project, um, just a couple of things to note before I provide a summary of the study. Um, this project is a reuse of the former Tri-Ware Dispatch Office. So, the traffic study, I just want to note, doesn't take any credit for that. So, all traffic increases assume this is a new development. We didn't take any sort of credit for the fact that the office was generating traffic before this, formally before this space gets reoccupied. And also, another thing to know is that although the size of the building or the building space seems large, the dispensary will only provide about six hundred square feet of retail space, and the remaining space will be used for ancillary uses, storage, offices, et cetera. So, the study is part of the traffic study. We look at existing conditions and future conditions without and with the development in place. What that really helps us do is gauge the project's impacts. The study analyzed the intersections of East Street and Carter Street, East Street at Shawshin Street, Industrial Avenue at East Street, and the site driveway intersections. Existing conditions were developed by performing traffic counts of the study area intersections during the weekday P.M. peak period as well as the Saturday midday peak period. All of our counts were conducted in May of this year when schools were in session. To look at future traffic conditions, we did project our traffic volumes out seven years, which really accounts for population growth or any sort of smaller residential developments in the area. And we also included background developments that were submitted at the time of our traffic study. We then layer on our trip generation and how we estimate trips for the site is we look at nationally accepted trip generation rates published by I.T.E. Using this information, though, we can expect about nineteen to twenty-nine additional peak hour trips to be generated by the site. So, a way that we like to boil that down is that we think about traffic increases on the adjacent streets. The largest traffic volume increase we're going to see is on East Street, just east of the site, with eleven to seventeen additional vehicles during peak hours, which really only represents one additional vehicle every three and a half to five and a half minutes or so. And these increases are well within the daily fluctuation of traffic. And increases throughout the rest of the study area are expected to be less than that. So, we did perform analyses at all these study area intersections, and we did find that the dispensary will have minimal impacts traffic-wise on the adjacent streets with maybe only minor increases and delay expected on certain approaches. We also took a look at parking on site. We reviewed I.T.E. parking demand data as well as the Tewksbury zoning bylaws, and the provided parking on site is adequate to accommodate demand. There's also an ample supply of overflow parking just on the northwest side of the building, but we don't really expect the site to need that, given the amount of parking that is provided adjacent to the entryway. And what that means is even with the additional overflow parking and the parking provided, there won't be any spillback onto the adjacent streets. We also took note, I did pay attention, I wasn't at the last hearing, but I did watch it, and I noticed a topic of concern was the rail crossing on Shawshin Street, and we have a similar situation with the rail crossing just west of our site. We did actually, when we performed our traffic counts, we did observe two train crossings, one during the weekday P.M. peak period and one during the Saturday midday peak period. So, we did try and look at that, and we tried to make sure that we wouldn't be adding to the problem. Ultimately, we took a look at the traffic increases expected west of the site, and based on the trip generation assumptions, we only expect about eight to twelve vehicles to really be traveling that section of East Street, which results in one additional vehicle every five to seven and a half minutes during peak hours. So, even if a train takes several minutes to clear the roadway, it's not likely that the proposed development will really have any additional adverse impact to East Street.
Just out of curiosity, when you observed the, sorry to interrupt, but when you observed the train, do you happen to know how long it took to go by?
It took more than two minutes. I think our observations, I wasn't specifically out there counting, but I spoke to the counter, and they said they saw eight to ten cars back up either direction, and then they just clear immediately once the train passes by.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, just a quick summary. This development will have minimal impact traffic-wise on the surrounding area. The site is a reuse of an office space. So, any increases that I just mentioned are likely to be much less when you compare to the previous office and what kind of traffic that might have been generating. Also, when it comes to dispensaries, they're opening up all over the place. I think there's probably a few hundred open now.
Three hundred.
Yeah, three hundred, that's what I thought, too. And in the surrounding towns, plenty of the surrounding towns, potentially three in Tewksbury. So, they have much less novelty than they had, you know, when Northampton opened, and it was just sort of chaos. It's more of a convenience thing now. People will swing through on their way home or, you know, wherever they're headed. So, we don't really see that there's going to be, you know, that kind of high customer volume that was seen previously, which reiterates the fact that this will really have minimal traffic impact to the adjacent streets. But that's just a brief summary of the traffic study. I can answer any more specific questions.
Did you have anything else to add or anything before?
Yeah, no, so the only other thing, the only other outstanding item was the construction cost estimate, the fee in lieu for the sidewalks that DPW recommended, and we got that last week. We've reviewed it, and we're good with agreeing to provide that fee.
Anything else? No. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to reiterate, since we have our traffic study person here, a neighbor expressed some concern about people going onto Carter and then Leiston to try and get around some of the traffic.
I think, I mean, there may be people that do that. You never know. You know, you can't necessarily guess everyone's travel pass. I don't foresee that being the most direct route. I did hear that as a comment last time. There's far more turning movements you're going through in a neighborhood versus just coming out right onto East Street and going whichever way you need to be going.
I think it was more, and by the way, that train, having once had to make the daily trek to Frasca Fields, those trains can be hundreds of cars long sometimes. So, the weight can actually be pretty substantial. We've had many heated town meeting battles about the north fire station and the south fire station, specifically because of the impact to response time because of those trains. I think the concern was if there was a backup on East Street because of the train, and it blocked off that sort of triangular three-way intersection, that people, rather than trying to get their way out to go east, might go through the neighborhood. So, I mean, generally, yes, a rarer occurrence because it would only occur with extreme backups. However, you know, still, we like to take the picture in the totality, and we've done the similar thinking as far as the Shawshin Street proposals as well. So, that was the first concern. And I think that's all I have related to the traffic right now, so.
I would just say that I think we would be open to like a residents-only sign or something like that, you know, sort of directing people not to take that left. I don't know if that is helpful or that is responsive to the concern.
That would be at the discretion of the DPW and Police Department.
What's that?
The DPW and the Police Department are typically the groups...
We can't dictate that. But I mean, your willingness to put one up on the town's behalf is fine. It's just whether the town will be okay with it or not. I don't know. I mean, you have the same issue, I suppose, with the rink. People may go that way to get to the rink sometimes. So, I don't know whether or not that's good, bad. I have no idea. But, I mean, if you want to put it on the dome, you know, if they put one up if the town was on board with it, then fine.
Yeah, thank you.
All set?
Yes.
So was I.
Are we just doing traffic or are we doing?
You can do whatever you like.
Excellent.
We're the three of us tonight, you have time.
Perfect. So, I had some questions about the kind of the paved area here. I see you submitted an alternate plan if we don't approve the waiver. What are some of the trade-offs if it is over there versus the one that's closer to the street?
So, operationally, if we have to keep the loading zone where it is, we're actually going to ask one of our consultants to come up?
Just to see if you guys have space at the table. You can just do what you want. Just keep the name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Chason. I'm the principal with A.C. Three Consulting. So, if we were going to go with the original loading zone, the issues with that are just more operational and safety. The ability to get the product right through that door over to the right on that side, you know, gets the product right into our secure area and right into our vault. If we have to bring it through the other door, you know, we are crossing more public kind of areas. So, you know, we would like to keep our product, you know, where we want it unseen, brought right into our facility, and that's also where our cash pickup will happen, is over in that Sally Port. So, it just makes it a more secure, more, I guess, hidden process for bringing in product and taking out cash.
Not to step in the other's way, just because it's going to get fed into it, since you just brought it up. Did you have a security consultant?
He's our security consultant, yeah.
So then, just, I want to make sure, just, we hit on what you just said about the security of the cash.
Sure.
This is part of that as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And then, just kind of from the Cannabis Control Commission, do both proposals meet kind of the requirements for secure transport?
There's no requirement for that kind of Sally Port, that receiving area. It is, they do like to see it. My team and I have done, you know, dozens and dozens of retails throughout the facility. The CCC does like to see that, but it is not required.
And if you were delivering through the other one, what are some of the other businesses that we'd be kind of walking past, passing, are they?
So, the other existing business on site currently is Compass Packaging, who owns the actual building itself. So, they have some big rigs that come in. There's also a medical device company that I actually just found out vacated. So, I think that we're it. Aside, you know, aside from our landlord.
I don't think I have any other further questions.
So, and I don't know if it's, I'll just have you stay just for a second. So, I don't know if it matters to them. I suppose we can check with Public Safety if it makes any difference to them where they think it may be best for this kind of thing. Just because there is money, you know, going in and out, you know, whether or not it's, they like it right there, kind of right on the shoot where it's more out in the open, so it's not on the other side and more tucked away. Not that it makes that much of a difference, I'm just curious if they have any feelings about it.
There hasn't been any commentary on any of the other applications, so I expect it's going to be whatever's most secure for the business and, you know, makes most sense from a site plan perspective. I haven't had any feedback from the Police Department on any of these, as far as site plan goes.
But it's your recommendation that this is the safest?
It is, yes.
Of the two options?
It is.
Okay. Safest and most secure, I guess, with the way it's...
Correct.
Okay. All right. I mean, beyond just design-wise, I mean, I think it's just important that whatever the landscaping is, that as much of it can be put there to kind of screen that piece from the street side. I mean, I know it's, you know, it's pretty strictly, you know, industrial buildings that are coming over there, and I think the only visual sort of neighbor to it is the Teamsters Trucking parking lot, right?
Right across the way.
Parking lot and training center. So, I mean, I'm not sure you really, but I think it just looks better kind of just being that first thing that comes in off the street, and it's the first thing you kind of see, even when you're taking that corner in Mike's street. So, I think the more shielding and landscaping, the better off that's going to be and the better it's going to look, you know, for you guys as well.
The idea is to make it as discreet as possible, obviously, yeah.
So, I think as long as that happens, then I have no issue with its placement. Let me again, because I don't think it's going to, it's not going to bother a neighbor. Is the way I look at it. Beyond that, I don't have anything else for the rest. So, I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments or concerns on this one? Vote once, twice, bring it back to the board. Slade, where do we stand on this?
So, I have prepared proposed waivers and conditions for this approval that were sent to the applicant last week. And like they mentioned, they also agreed to really the one condition that we've had so far, which is to contribute to the sidewalk fund in lieu of constructing sidewalks along any of the various frontages for this parcel, because it actually butts two public ways in a private way. And then, I can also add that the applicant is agreeable to posting residents-only or other divertive signage if seen fit by the DPW and Police Department. The only two waivers noted are the one for paved services other than access driveways being within twenty feet of the property line of butting the right-of-way. And that's really just kind of crossing a T and dotting an I to make sure that the loading area is accounted for. And then, the other one is the provision for site plan review applications requiring a master signage plan. They intend to have the signage meet the bylaw, and I did note in my review that any existing signage may have lens replacements with just a building permit, which there is a multi-tenanted sign there, I believe. And then, anything else would meet the bylaw, but absent a formal master signage plan, that waiver is required. So, that's fine. The only other thing as they noted is, I guess we're just going to sleep now, is that they did submit a traffic study, as Ms. Braun noted, and you folks are welcome to have a peer review if you don't want to. That's also well within your purview. But other than that, there's nothing else outstanding.
All right, so before I ask the board what the board wants to do, I'll check with you guys, because there's only three of us here. So, in the event we vote, we need the three of us here. You know, obviously, if the full board is here, you have more leeway. So, I'll ask you first whether or not, if we decide to close the hearing and vote, is that what you want, or do you want this continued to our next meeting, when I suspect barring other issues, that there'll be more board members present? So, that is your option, and I'll give it to you to talk amongst yourselves for a second and then let me know.
So, I guess the one question I would ask is, I want to confirm we've provided all the information that you feel you need before we get to that point where you're closing the hearing, so.
Is there anything that you feel that you don't know and still want to know?
I think just a peer review on the traffic study. For a lot of these other ones, I think we have requested a lot of these, and in that area, it is very busy.
I'm pretty comfortable with this. I think the traffic studies, the data we've heard from several other consultants has been fairly consistent. I don't think you quite got the rub of the delays with the train, but I, you know, I kind of have that information in my own head as far as the impact of that, having sat in it far too many times while being late for practice. So, to answer your question, Mr. Hanley, no, there's no other information that I need from you as the applicant.
So, for me, I'm fine, between the traffic studies we've done on all these, sort of, there's a champ around this, plus we've done others for other stuff on that road at this point, so I'm not, same thing. I understand that the train is an oddity. It hasn't actually been folded into any of the other traffic studies either at this point, because it's such a, you can't really schedule for it. They don't come through consistently. The sizes of the train change. I mean, I don't know, whatever the max longest one has ever been, I don't know, what is that? Is it ten minutes, fifteen minutes, you think?
I think ten's fair.
At least ten minutes.
No, I'm, no, I'm asking for a fair guess.
It's been over ten minutes. Probably about close to fifteen minutes.
So, if we use fifteen as the top number, your version, you had, you were saying that was going to add an extra car?
Yeah.
So, if I did that, it'd be three?
And an extra car, too, yeah.
So, we're talking with three, so, but I'm visualizing how far that would go back in one direction or the other. I'm not sure the street can't handle three more cars than what would already be there. So, I don't see that as being, even on the longest of trains, that being, you know, an overly burdensome space of cars, you know, beyond that, because you've got a pretty long leeway back towards Dascom before, you know, you're really being, three cars isn't, from what, you're going to get backed up on fifteen-minute train, the three more cars, give or take, is not really, you know, onerous, I don't think. That's just me. I'm not sure, you know, because again, we're looking at that as the worst case. So, that's what we're working with. But if you're holding to, one, to do the peer review, then I would suggest that you're going to have to do the peer review, because that means you're short of, short of all.
I guess we'll continue. The issue with that intersection is it is the gateway into industrial two. So, anybody that's industrial two has to go through that intersection. So, yeah, I think maybe we could just continue it and just come back to it on the seventeenth.
So, then we'll put this out there for the peer review with the hope that we can get back our information for the next meeting?
If I commence it tomorrow, that should be perfectly reasonable. I can solicit proposals tomorrow, and I can let you know what the cost is, and then I can get that going.
Do you have a sense, it is two weeks?
Yeah. I've had them turned around between ten and fourteen days.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So, then we'll suspect that when we come back at our next meeting, that this will end up with a vote, and you may or may not have more building members present as well, which may or may not be beneficial. I guess it'll depend on how they feel, but... Is that, everybody all with that?
Sounds like you need a motion to continue.
I do. And we need it for seven twenty.
So, I'd like to make a motion to continue the site plan review for eight ninety East Street until July seventeenth at seven twenty.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Motion made, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed, motion carries. All right, Mr. Chairman, next time.
Have a good night.
Thanks. That brings us to agenda item J, which is 2186 and 2196 Main Street, also continue from our 612 meeting. Once everyone's settled, if you just give your names to the record, the floor is yours.
Rick Morse, Architecture EL.
Rebecca Adams, 1620 Partners.
Dean Graffio, 52 Pinnacle Street, CEO of Carbonair.
Floor is yours.
Just like to update the board on the progress we have made from our June 12th meeting. I'm going to turn it over to Rick.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. So as Dean mentioned, we are here to update the board on the progress that we've made to date. I just wanted to specifically mention that we have listened carefully to you, the board, and the neighbors' concerns, and have addressed them throughout our design and continue to address them. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you all remember, however, the concerns communicated to the team at the past meeting were the buffer line at the back of the property and removing existing vegetation. So we will be maintaining a buffer line for neighboring properties by providing mass plantings in trees, which will be used to soften the building's silhouette and provide shade for the paved areas by creating a more pleasant and welcoming environment for visitors and neighbors. So we will be using the green, the, excuse me, we will be using greenery and landscaping to further enhance the building's connection to the natural environment, creating a more inviting space for the local community. The other concerns consisted of trash pickup, and we have spoken with the neighbors, and trash pickup will be during normal business hours, not at 5 o'clock in the morning. Lighting was also a concern, and our lighting plan uses downcast lighting, which is night sky compliant. We have spoken with the neighbors and assured them that there will not be any bright lights portraying into their windows, and there will not be any noise pollution. And Rick Morse from Architecture EL is going to walk you through the plans that we submitted to the board.
Yeah, so a quick update since we last met. We've primarily been focusing on the site comments. We've addressed and resubmitted the fire truck movements plan. We've also submitted some renderings. The concentration of those was, last time we met, we hadn't wed our building to the site.
Thank you.
Usually I can send my voice across the room. So in your package, which I'm sure you've perhaps looked at, Fire Truck Movements Plan, the terrain map shows the site and how it interacts with the neighboring streets. I just want to call your attention to the rear of the lot where we've maintained the tree buffer, which abuts that cul-de-sac. Again, you see simple architectural form, just filling in that open lot within the fabric of the existing.
Can I stop you for one second?
Sure.
Can I get you to push the easel back? The end nearest to you, push it back a little. Nope. Just the end nearest to you. I'm not saying it right, obviously. The right side, I want you to push back away from me.
Oh, got you.
And then this gentleman here, I know is the one who had a lot of questions about it. I want to make sure he can see it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So that's why. We've got him in front of us, so if it's turned a little bit away from us, it's not the end of the world.
So just to reiterate, maintaining the tree buffer to the rear, placing the, basiting the building such that it fits logically into the fabric, and creating a, just a positive contribution to the experience of the, of the street. We also took available satellite data to show that its impact on the existing tree line. So you can see that this, the trees at the rear of the site are maintained to a high degree. There is some overlap here where we have our lot at the rear of the, of the property behind the building. But it, for the most part, occupies the vacant parts of the site that exist presently. And then we presented some views that show the overall feel and impression that the design will give. This is a view from the rear, looking across the parking lots towards the entry of the building, over the dumpster enclosure. Parking lot is also landscaped. This is the view looking southwest for reference. And then your Main Street view looking south, simple barn shape occupying, fronting the street, modest signage, and the promenade taking you towards the, the parking at the rear. Again, all working within the existing vegetation that's on site, and then contributing new site appropriate landscaping. And then Main Street looking in the opposite direction. This is across the secure delivery area. Get a slight glimpse to the rear, it's across the parking lot. And again, this tree buffer stacks up behind the building. This is the Marsh Street intersection. We also provided some aerial views. Here's a view, overview of the site looking south, gives a good sense of how the parking lot lays out, how it tucks in behind. And again, this is, we incorporated the local topographical information from our civil engineers, so we have a, a very accurate depiction of how the building weds to the site. Opposite aerial view, overview looking east. Here we see the front of the building, parking behind, and that landscape buffer to the rear, you can get a, just a glimpse of that cul-de-sac. And then view spinning around to the north, you know, pretty much the same story, but you see a clear depiction of Marsh and Main Streets. And some general views of the building. Northwest elevation, this is the, the entry from the parking lot side. And another view of that entry from the opposite corner. And so that's, concludes what we submitted in our package.
All right. We'll start with Ms. Lozai.
Yeah, so kind of just looking at the renders a little bit, what's the, what's the distance between your entranceway there and DeCarolus Drive? I think when I was looking at the plans last session, it looked almost opposite, but I'm seeing now in the render, it looks like that's actually a driveway for.
The requirement would be a, a minimum of 50 feet, and we're at 53 feet.
Okay. Yeah, and then I think outside of that, I know last time we had a lot of engineering comments specifically around stormwater.
Right.
Any update on that?
So we'll, we're looking ahead to the 30th when we'll be submitting our stormwater report, completed traffic plan. We've completed traffic data collection last week and are now working on that report.
Sounds like there's a lot still in progress. That's all I have for now.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, it just sounds like there's a lot still in progress.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the renderings. It's throwing me off a little bit in terms of, when I look at your site plan, it looks like there's a 12 foot or so elevation difference between Main Street and the rear of the property. And I know, having, having lived on the other side of the retaining wall at Pedro Auto, I've seen what happens with all of that runoff and so forth. Would it be possible to get some, some dimensioned sections showing through the building from Main Street all the way up to the back of the property line with the retaining wall and the fence? Because in some cases, the trees, your building is 26 feet tall, in some parts of the rendering, your trees are taller than the building. I assume you're not planting 30 foot trees. And in other cases, they're, you know, a little bit shorter, but probably still 20 or so feet tall. So I don't know if the renderings are pulling in just stock photos, or if that's your intent is to have trees that large, because you are trying to do some screening?
Right. A mature tree is, yeah, being, you know, it's showing a mature result versus the planting on day one, which, you know, depending on the caliber size of the tree, may be smaller, of course. But a dimensional section is certainly possible.
Okay. That's, that's basically the one thing I really feel would help me to get all of this and tie it together.
Okay. We'll do.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, for me, one, question one, the, this is A 0.4. This is that one. That big tree that you showed, that's not on your property, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And that actually exists?
Well, I have to go to the satellite and see if any.
It's not, it, it, for my purposes, I guess it's really not going to matter, because my next point is if it's not yours, you can't be sure it's going to be there. So that brings me to my next point. So I just wanted to make sure it wasn't on your property before I make the next point?
Yeah, there's some trees.
Okay. But same thing, but we can't be sure it stays, because it's not yours. Just if somebody next door does work, that could come down. So my, my next point is, when I mentioned it last time, one of the things I had said was, the sides of the buildings, which are going to be visible from Main Street going in both directions. And I had asked about, you know, whether like full windows or whatever. And obviously, your, your intent is to kind of look like a barn, is that right? Yes. So then I would think fake barn windows on the side of the building is what I was talking about, then? Yes. Which I still don't see. No. So if that tree's gone especially, you're going to have a straight on look at the whole big side of that building. And as of now, it's just that plain side of the building. So that's what I don't want. I don't want it to look like that. I want to have something that breaks up that big wall at the side of the building on both sides, but I'll get to the other side in a second. So that's, you know, whether it's fake barn windows, something like that. Because we've done it with other properties that we've done, some of them never did get built. But the ones that are on these kind of streets like Main Street or something, we're definitely going to see them on the two sides. We wanted something on the sides, which isn't the case in a lot of other sections of town where you won't see that. But you will see that going in both directions. So I want something on the side of the building that breaks up that big wall that you're going to be staring at as you come driving, in this case, south.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Back to that. So it can be a fake window, I'm assuming, with a wall behind it, because just for security reasons?
While you were talking, I pulled up fake barn windows.
Okay.
Almost any of the fake barn windows that I pulled up are probably going to be okay, whether they're like the fake doors or the fake windows. There's just something, because we've done it other times with some of the others where they're like those round fake windows, they look like they're, they're going somewhere, but they don't. They're just there on the outside. But for your building, I don't think that works, because you're looking for a barn look. Those other buildings, we were just trying to come up with something that fit for what they were, and those round windows works. It's the same thing when we ask people to put the porticoes on top, just to break up the roof. Right. In your case, I wouldn't, I won't push those, because you're looking for sort of a barn look? Yeah. Which is fine. I can be fine with leaving the top. The sides have to be dealt with somehow. Which brings me to the other side of the building. So obviously, you've got the enclosure for the dumpster, so the, the lower section isn't really where, you know, it's not going to be the whole side, because you've got the lower section blocked out a little. So it's something, you know, up, whether it's those fake lake, hayloft windows? Yeah, like a clear. And they don't have to be life size, like, you know what I mean? For actual, you know, the size of hay, hay doors in the top of a barn, but something like that, that just gives it that breaking up look when someone's coming at it, just, I think it's just going to look a lot nicer. Yeah. And I don't think from your, your perspective, it's going to be, you know, an onerous add, because they're not real. I'm not asking you to cut sides out of the building or anything. It's just something to fake everybody out as they're driving in both directions.
I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Number one, I'm glad that you touched on like barn doors, because our design team has been looking at like a barn door kind of motif with, in combination with a window. And I just also wanted to say that your comments from last meeting weren't lost on us.
Oh, no, that's fine. I'm just going with the renderings I have in front of me.
Primarily working with wedding, building the site, and essentially, you're seeing the same building. So we're currently working on some options for those points that you made, and those will be.
So, working on the same side of the building, because you've got the, the dumpster enclosure?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I think the dumpster enclosure is at the rear of the site. I think that's the secure loading.
I'm sorry. So it's the secure loading area enclosure. I'd like to see something in front of that, some sort of bushes, whether they're similar to the ones on the other side, or, you know, those, I don't even know, I'm never good at this with the names, but those ones almost look like mini Christmas trees. You know, they don't get real tall, but they, you know, they're, they're always there, they don't, you know, you don't lose the leaves.
Arbor Vida, I think?
Yeah, sure. They, you know, I leave it to other folks to figure.
I think there's a couple hundred of them in the school building.
Yeah, so like that kind of thing. Just, you know, just something that's going to be in front of that, that, that enclosure to kind of break that up, again, as you're coming at it. Because we're not doing low windows or anything there. Just from that side view kind of coming at it, you know, and I think that, you know, I'm not sure what it is you have here in the rendering out in front. But I, you know, I don't, they almost look like giant tulips, but I presume that's not what's going there in the front. But same idea, that whole enclosure just sort of blocked up somehow, whether it's a combination of the bushes and whatnot, just so that's not what you're staring at every time you come north on Main Street. Yeah, and Mr. Chairman already brought up, you know, obviously, we're look, we're getting a look at the trees a little further down the road than, you know, what they might look like when they first go in. But, you know, I mean, I think this is along the ideas of the kind of screening that I think, you know, we want to see. And as much, obviously, as much as what's there staying is going to make everybody a lot happier, I think. And I think that's it for me for now. So with that, I'll open it up to the audience. Any questions, comments, or concerns? You got to go up? I just need your name and your address, and then the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Diane Dominy. I live at, I own and live at 8 March Road. I am the major abutter to this proposal, for this commercial property. I don't know if you've actually come out to look at the lots. You may be familiar with them, but because they were allowed to merge these two lots, which is in, within their right, it actually created a funny plot plan. So my major concern is, a lot of the way they're, they're building and their structure, it's actually going to wrap exactly around like my house. So that's a big concern. The next thing is, it is in different grades of the land, and now they're going to disturb and affect me and my neighbor's property. You know, commercial properties, they do do their best, but when you look out at other communities with these types of businesses, you know, that's why they're giving a 3% fee to the city of, I mean, town of Tewksbury, because there's going to be automatic situations and problems that do occur. Now, along that road, it's vet, the traffic is hard. You know, I work two jobs, I'm in and out, and I need to be able to get to my job. And right now, at times, it's tough. I'm asking if you go through and vote this particular area, permission to build, that we look at some kind of guideline or a restriction during business hours, making maybe appointment by, you know, by appointment only? We really need your support and help within that residential area. Now, a majority of people that live in this residential area, we're all older people. So we're looking to you to help us even work with them. They said that they reached out to the neighbors. I am their major neighbor. I am the abutter to this whole proposal. I have never had a conversation with anybody. No one's even come out. No one's even come out, walked my land, looked at my trees. I can't control it, and that's not what I'm saying, but as a good faith of a commercial property, abutting my residential, why wouldn't you come have a conversation with me? So I can have a full scope of exactly what this is gonna look like. The other thing I wanna mention is, in the local town paper, it actually says that 2122 Main Street has also been approved for a dispensary, which is five lots down from where they, their proposal is.
I'll back you up because there hasn't been a single dispensary approved yet in town.
Yeah, I clicked it out.
I'm not gonna argue with the newspaper.
No, no, no.
I'm gonna tell you that at the beginning of the meeting tonight, it was talked about that the board, the select board is still looking at all the projects, so not a single project has been approved in town.
Okay.
Someone misspoke if they said that in the newspaper.
Yeah, and, and the newspaper, it says they're waiting for the fire department just to sign off.
So that's just for this piece right here, for the planning board portion. So the, the retail cannabis locations, it's a two-step process. They have to receive site plan approval from this board, which 2122 Main Street did receive. However, they are still required to receive a license approval from the select board to what Mr. Johnson's point, no licenses have been issued to date. However, there have been a handful that have made it through this part of the process.
Okay.
So that's most likely what the paper was referring to. So it's, it's a yes and a no. So no one's received final approval, but they did get through this piece already, yes.
Okay. So if that happens to go through first, are we now facing two dispensaries in such a close proximity of each other?
I can't answer your question because we are not the licensing board. That's the select board. So whatever the select board decides to do after those, these have left our hands is up to the select board. So any questions or whatever you have for that would have to be taken up with them. The only thing I can tell you is that the town is allowed up to three.
Yep.
Whether or not and where they put them, whether they do three, one, two, zero, is up to the select board and where they decide to allow them is up to the select board. So those questions would have to be directed to them because we have no control over it once it leaves here.
Okay.
Can you do me a favor? Would you flip your, your pages back to TM 101? No, it's this one. Do you have that up there? Okay. So just for bearings purposes, your property is that, just to the, to the right?
This is my property.
Yeah, okay.
And we have, they are running, we come this way and now out back behind me as well.
Their what?
So.
Oh, property lot, yeah.
Their property and their parking lot and their dumpster pickup, snow pile.
So can I get you to go back to the podium because I need you on the microphone?
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson, I can actually bring up the GIS map and refer to what we use here.
Yeah, that's right. But just from the map we're looking at, when you say their parking lot, the parking lot that's depicted on that map is the extent of their parking lot. So the three spaces to the far right that sort of jet out are the ones that would be closest to your property, correct?
Yes.
Those three. But the rest of that space over there is not being paved, just so we're all on the same page.
No, there's no connection to the.
Yeah, there's no connection to the road and there's no paving to that far right section. The end of their parking lot is those three spaces. Okay? So that's what, when you said the thing about them wrapping around your property, I was, I was trying to visualize what you mean. Their lot wraps around your property.
Correct.
But the footprint of what's actually being constructed ends with those three spaces and there's a driveline that would lead to the other spaces that kinda come around that point of your property. But it's in terms of wrapping, it's really more about the lot, not the, what's being built. Is that accurate? Am I saying it wrong? Because that, that's just the way.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay. So then what would, what, reason I asked that is because it would bring me to my next.
So excuse me, if you can just take the mic.
Yeah, that's, I need you to stay on, yeah.
You can take the mic with you.
Sir, could you do me a favor? Could you get on the other side of her just for a second? Just so, because woman, I'm pointing at something and she can see it easier.
Okay.
Okay, so the three spaces and then you were gonna say something?
Correct. Right, so the building's out towards Main.
Yep.
But their loading area and parts in the back of the building and the main function, which is the noisiest, that's why a lot of the neighbors surrounding the community sort of here complaining. Because what's gonna happen is they're gonna be traveling up through behind our yards right where we all sleep, all at.
This is where I'm getting confused. That's the extent of the parking lot. Where would they be driving? I'm confused.
Well, no, they're gonna put their heaven.
You keep pointing way up there.
I'm sorry.
That's all trees in the back.
So they're coming up behind here for their dumpster.
Nope, dumpster's on the other side. That little square, that's the dumpster.
There's no development.
And there's no road on that side. The road that comes in, I mean, the entrance comes into the other side.
So we just, Jen, Jen, Pedro's, here's your house. Right. Parked, parked. She's not showing up.
And this is, this is you, this is Jen?
Yes.
So the entrance to this property is closer to Bedro's, further away from the street and no driving other than if you were parking in those three spaces, but anywhere near your property. That's why I'm just trying to get a visual threshold to work off of.
I understand.
So what I would say though is, your concern and a reasonable concern is that fence and what might be over shielding her section of the property in terms of tree line, fence, that kind of thing. And this is where we might get into too, where the normal-sized fence that is allowed versus the size a neighbor may like is where you might wanna have some conversations because, you know, and grading's gonna matter too because obviously eight foot and then they're higher than you. So in some of those cases, we, we've been okay with allowing fences that are larger than the norm because they're actually beneficial to a neighbor that's behind or side or whatever it is, and also the elevation change. Because you put your fence in and it's gonna, you know, an eight-foot limit, but then what's behind you is rising behind you and that eight foot feels much smaller to the person behind you. So that's where I'd say that you may wanna just check in with your abutter and have some conversations just so then we hear back, this is where everybody thinks they are. I mean, ultimately, we have to make a decision one way or the other, you know, we're, not everybody's gonna be happy about everything, but it is a conversation I think that you need to have just to hear what, you know, what they think they see and off your renderings, what they'll be seeing and how that all sort of fits with everybody, okay? Just because I think, you know, you know, the, the resident's not wrong that, you know, we wanna do what we can for, you know, the residential section, but at the same time, you do have to understand you live next to.
No, I understand.
A business section, you know what I mean?
I understand.
That didn't just prop up. It's, it's there.
Yep.
So.
Right.
Push and pull kind of thing. But, you know, I do think a conversation is, is reasonable to, you know, to see what, you know, what her concerns are and how you may or may not be able to address some of those and also maybe making a little more sense to the resident, what's really coming down on the property versus the whole property, you know? And I think that would be, you know, probably beneficial to both sides.
We'll get your contact and permission if you'd like to share it and we can continue the dialogue.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
Did you have anything else?
Nope.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else with any questions, comments or concerns? Are you good?
It's all right.
Nope, you're good? Okay. Anybody else? All right, so we'll bring it back to the board. So obviously, you know, there's still some stuff outstanding, so you gotta work on that. Obviously, check in with the, the abutters and, you know, see what you guys, you know, can talk about and, you know, see where everything is. You may have put things in they don't really know are there and there may be some things you can add that would be, you know, help alleviate some of the concerns. So we've got two weeks between now and our next meeting. And obviously, you have some engineering and whatnot to deal with as well, so that's all, it's got its own, its own issues. So with that, I will, what is the pleasure of the board? I have 7:25.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the site plan review for 2186 and 2196 Main Street until July 17th at 7:25.
Excellent.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. We'll see you guys next time.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item K, another one that we need to continue to our next meeting, which we have penciled in at 7:15. Do I have a motion to continue 1695 Shawshin Street till then?
So moved.
Have a motion made. Motion made and seconded, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to correspondence, which I don't believe, we didn't have any correspondence. That brings us to other business not known at the time of posting this agenda. Do we have any other business not known at the time of posting this agenda?
No other business, but I did, in the interest of letting our, our audience go, I did have a minor committee report from the elementary school building committee.
Oh, okay.
Now that it's summer and school is out, they're focusing on, working on a number of items. One of the issues was with the HVAC, because of the length of one of the cooling loops, they had the wrong circuit board, they're ordering them from LG and some other instances like that. So some stuff that kinda wish we could have picked up earlier, but basically, you know, sometimes you just don't know till you test drive it for a little while. But it seems like all of the parties involved, whether it's a warranty issue or a vendor issue, it seems like they're all responding in good faith and they all understand the importance of trying to get all of these resolved by mid-August so that we are ready to go and we don't have teachers in the jungle trying to stalk their classrooms and things like that.
Luckily, we didn't have a bad winter. We weren't stuck with one of those 30, you have June 30 checkout dates at school.
And then I know the, the floor in the gym was of concern to a lot of residents and whatnot and the expert came in and said that in cases where, when the gym floor is installed, if it's not already a dehumidified environment, that this does happen. They made some recommendations, there's some minor repairs, removal of the filler that they had put in to try to smooth it out. That's all gonna be ongoing and documented by the owner's project manager and the architect to make sure that the gym floor is basically brought into full compliance and it's just gonna need a couple of winters and summers to fully season and sort of self-correct.
Okay. My only question would be if their concern or their problem was during humid times. This is the humid time and the HVAC, HVAC system is.
The gym is working.
All right, okay.
Yes, the gym is.
It just doesn't feel like you can get much done that way.
It's the further away you get from the roof, the, the longer the loop gets. But generally, I feel like one of the things that, you know, we have these 13 and 15-person building committees and there's only one construction person on there and I was, I'm not an expert in HVAC systems, but to me, it generally seems like, you know, there's things that maybe, it'd be nice if we had knowledge that we could pass forward from committee to committee. So I'm not sure how the town does that, if it's just the same people serving over and over and learning and retaining that information. I know Tom Cook has served on multiple building committees, but I don't know if that's an issue that a municipality would take up with an entity like the MSBA or something like that, that more construction people, less people that like to pick colors and, you know, and, I mean, we had lots of input from all of the teachers and people that were gonna occupy the building. And even then, there was a lot of stuff that just didn't quite come out the way it seemed they wanted, so. Just some reflective notes on, now that we're very, very, very close to the end of the process, except we have to wait like 10 months from the final invoice being paid for the MSBA to sign off and cut us the big check.
All right, very good. And we have to check out who's on the committees, I guess we just go back and check the plaques?
Sure.
The annex has one.
Anything else under this category?
Nothing here.
All right. That leaves us with adjournment. So do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, good night, we'll see you next time.